Alright, so, um, alright, so we have, uh-
Let's do the public hearing again, since they can hear.
Okay, so apparently we had some muting issues here, so let's, uh-
Like Brett, Linda, they didn't hear any of that?
They didn't hear any of it.
Alright, let's just back up to, we did the pledge.
Okay, so pledge is done, alright, visitor citizen form, no one signed up to speak, right Linda?
Correct.
Okay, so no one signed up to speak at the beginning here, alright, next up we have a public hearing for the requested annexation of the area out front of Lakewood Village, um, so I'll open the public hearing, Linda, did anyone sign up to speak during the public hearing?
No.
No one requested to speak during the public hearing, so-
I'm going to close the public hearing.
I have a motion from Daryl to close the public hearing, I have the second from Eric, all those in favor? Aye, okay.
I think so.
Okay, very good, alright, next up, regular agenda, item one, consideration of variance for 424 Peninsula for front-facing garage, this is on the curve, uh, this is an irregularly shaped triangular sort of lot, uh, with a narrow frontage, floodplain issues in the rear, um, basically this is the poster child for variance for a front-facing garage, you can't make one fit sideways, um, so, uh, looks good to me.
The only-
Any other questions?
The only concern I have is they have that real tall garage door, but, I don't know, I don't think it's a showstopper, but it's just one of those, I guess, do we know a little bit more what they were planning, what their intention is?
He has a, uh, this little trailer that he wants to go, I think it's the-
A travel trailer, he's got a bigger, uh, taller vehicle-
He wants to put a travel trailer inside, not inside him, okay, the door's not great.
Okay, any, any other questions?
I make a motion to approve the variance on 424 Peninsula for the front-facing garage.
Uh, for front-facing garage, Serena has got the motion, and Matt Pistonett has the second, all those in favor? Alright, thank you very much, alright, next up, we have a discussion of concrete roads, let me give everybody an update here on the roads, uh, first off, we'll start with basically the, uh, the financial update. Uh, so, what's been going on recently, as you all can tell, they've moved over to Cary Lane, so they've done a lot of work on Cary, that's ongoing, uh, they're almost ready on High Ridge, they've done a lot of work down there, we still have some inlet issues on High Ridge, uh, some underground pipe that we gotta work out, we're working on some of those solutions, um, so on the current, uh, outlays here, you can see in the, in the financials, so, construction cost remaining are about three million, what we have left in the construction runs two five, so, we have a current gap right now of four hundred thirty-eight thousand, that's the current funding gap, that we have to come up with by next May, now we have a large change order that's still outstanding, that's between fifty to a hundred thousand dollar change order on the, uh, on the dirt, the dirt work, and that is, if you drive down High Ridge, or if you drive down Melody, you'll see sections of the road, it looks like there's a miniature earthquake, where the road is suddenly, kind of like a hole in it, that was them going down and peeling back the layers to see how much asphalt there is there, to work out this change order, how much dirt, how much milling is there gonna be, so, um, they're, they're not gonna have to purchase dirt, that's the big, and that was a hundred thousand dollars plus of dirt, and so now they're gonna reuse our dirt, the, the mountain at the sewer plant, so that's the credit, but there's some additional dirt work involved there, so it's, so we're, we're working on it, yeah, that's why we pay the engineers, and so, it'll be a significant change, uh, to that going down, I, I think I anticipated it would be about three fifty when we were all said and done, it's gone up recently in the last month or so, we've had to relocate a bunch of lines, we're still in the process of doing that, so, one of the things that happens is, the, the engineers designing the drainage, they have all those drop inlets on the corners, those big inlets, and the one across from you Serena, is a six by six, it's a six foot by six foot drop inlet that's going in, in, in that area, well, when they're positioning it, when we start digging, we find out that that's sitting on top of, uh, the sewer line, well, it can't, it has to move, and on the other side of the street, the water line is in the way, the water main, so we have to drop the water main, so we've got a couple places where we're having to move water mains and sewer lines, because the, the inlet goes, we can move it forward and backward a little bit, but we can't move it laterally, because all the other pipes are tying in, so on Cary, there's four pipes tying in under the middle of the street to make that big junction box, so we're, we're having to move a lot of stuff, that's what's going on now, is, is getting that out of the way, and there's no way they would know that in the design, because we didn't give them, we didn't know, if you just look down the street, you don't know where our water lines are either, you could guess, you know what side of the street they're on, you don't know whether they're four feet from the edge of the pavement, or six feet, you know, they didn't give us maps of those when they did it, back in ninety-six, so we don't know, we're guessing where they are based on the fire hydrants, but we don't know how far offset they are, so, some of that is just guesswork, and we, we run into that problem down here on High Ridge, and we just have to get in front of it, so that's some of the, some of the work that we're working on, we found a mystery pipe at, at the corner of High Ridge and, uh, High Ridge and Woodcrest, that lot's got the eight feet of fill dirt on it on the corner, so there's a pipe in the back that runs out to the street, but we raised the street almost five feet, which means our pipe would now be about ten feet underground, where it is today, which won't work, and it blocks up all the water up the street, so it was illegally that they added all this fill dirt, so they basically dammed it up, so it'd be like on this side of town, a lot of water over here runs through the backyards, and then hits shoreline, and then the shoreline picks it up, well, over there, it was running through the backyard, when somebody added eight feet of fill dirt to their yard, well, that kind of stops the end of that, so it couldn't make it the rest of the way, so, we're having to, even though we didn't put it in, and there's no drainage easement there, if we plug that pipe, it'll flood the backyards of the people uphill, so we have to fix it, so we're gonna fix it, we're gonna put in a new pipe, and then we're gonna lean the property, because we're not paying for illegal pipe, but-
So they said that they could, they could just raise one end to that a little bit, and they'd be okay?
They're gonna put in, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna put in some, um, some CFP there, so we're gonna put in, CFP is corrugated metal pipe, basically like a culvert, but we're gonna slope it at like a half a degree, it's gonna barely slope.
So it's gonna say where it is back next to the other lot, but-
It's just in the back corner, and it's, we're gonna slope it, and they've measured it, apparently we've, it's got a little fall, it can still hit the bottom of the drop inlet, so we're redesigning it now, did the bottom of the inlet. You know the corner, the empty lot across from that?
Yeah, so that's right next to the, next to Mount school.
Yes, exactly, yes, right, um, so we're working that angle, uh, they should get, that's gonna be a change order that you're gonna see for us, so we're gonna have to pay for it, 'cause Ed Bell's gotta do it, and, um, and then we're gonna just lean the property on it.
We'll move ahead with that, will we notify him ahead of time that this is about to happen?
And we'll notify him eventually, right now, we don't know when it's gonna happen, um, but the problem is, there's no solution, and there is no, if you, if you try to like dig it out and leave it as a trench, it's below ground.
Yeah, the only other idea was to level that whole guy next to him, his back yard.
You have to raise all the backyards all the way up the hill.
Yeah.
So, um-
Or you remove the fill that was put on the lot, but then-
Yeah, there's like, no, there's no good answer, now, the thing that helps us is that before we did the road, a lot more water came through there, but now that we've done Meadow Lake, we've designed the bar ditches over there, we've designed the road, there's actually less water now going that way, 'cause now it's being captured correctly on Meadow Lake, so, it's not as bad a problem as it's been historically, but still, if we plug it, we can't, we can't plug it, that's not an option, we have to get that water out of the back yard.
That would be a lake there, if we did.
So, it's just one of these things where we're stuck between a rock and a hard place, um, right now, we're a little bit hung up on Cary Lane, because we need to move, the transformer at the corner of Cary and Melody, there's a transformer there, apparently, God only knows why, the power line diagonals across Cary Lane, and heads towards your side yard, it doesn't go just down the street on both sides where the transformers are, a diagonal goes in a cross heading towards your driveway, so, which means it hits in conflict with every one of the pipes that are underground, so the coastal line's gotta go, it's gotta be moved, um, and they're quoting us, like, bug lags, that we'll push it and we'll be there in about a month, which is a problem, um, so that intersection in Cary and Melody right now is hung, so, they're not going to put any of the pipe in till they put all of the pipe in, they confirmed that with me, um, so, uh, so that's kind of what we're waiting on there, is to get that done, otherwise, they're rolling up, and they're gonna do, you know, they're, they're trying to get, they're trying to get High Ridge to concrete down by Thanksgiving, it looks like that's not gonna happen, they're not, they're only gonna work two days, Thanksgiving week-
Probably gonna wait until it's about there.
And they, they don't think they're gonna get any concrete down right now, just for you guys, this is a copy, um, it's a little hard to read, but this is what we get in our meetings, this is the two-week look ahead, so, this is their proposed schedule for the next two weeks, um, so, part of that was that they were calling in the two-week look ahead, that they would end up actually trying to get Cary, get some concrete on it, and that's not gonna happen, so the goal now, kind of unofficially, is to get concrete on Cary by the end of the year, and to get, uh, High Ridge concrete on it, um, Thanksgiving, right after Thanksgiving.
The coastal water lag, does it affect the five hundred, the ground, so it's compatible?
It affects the pipe work, which affects, they can do the paving, they just have to lead out sections, so you gotta lead out the intersection.
So, down there Meadow Lake and High Ridge, or I think, go on concrete on High Ridge, and then pack up, leave, come back.
The other issue we're working, we've gotta expedite now, is the lift station on High Ridge, now that the, now that the road's been raised to four, four and a half feet, the dirt is actually falling on top of the lift, we buried the lift station, you can't even lift a lid, it's under, it's underground, so we've got, they dug that back out today, so we're expediting a, uh, a concrete ring to be put on that, so we may go to Ed Bell to see if we can get them to get it, so again, there might be a few things that we're trying to acquire from them, um, but, uh, other than that, I mean, the, the road is, uh, is progressing, I think everybody knows that we're back on Stow again, Stow is corrective action.
Did they get that done?
I believe they're done now, um, they start, they still have a little bit more to fill in, down on the, uh, Stow Court, near there.
The drainage there on the other side, on Lakeside, they, did they get that done?
Yes, they were putting sod back on it, yeah, so they're watering that, um, so everybody knows, kind of the way it works, it's supposed to work, is, when they think they're finished with the street, then, we do a walk-through and come up with a punch list, a preliminary punch list, which is, these are all the things that need to be fixed, and then they fix it, only after it's fixed, are they allowed to like, okay, we're good with this for now, at the end of the project, we come back again, and start over, do every street with a final punch list, 'cause at the end, you know, that inlet that looks good now might be leaning, right, we don't know it, it's something like crack between now and then, but, we haven't even done that punch list walk for Stow, so we haven't even told them what needs to be fixed, this is just the obvious, you know, so, people have started putting their sprinklers back, people are starting to put things back out there, and-
Yeah, you should put in your mowers later.
I will, yeah.
So I don't think a lot of people understand that.
I mean, yes, it's very important that until that gets walked, until we do the punch list, you really just stay out of there, um, and it's funny, people seem to think they have to water the sod, like, you know, they have to get out there quickly and sprinkle in water, and put the irrigation back to water the sod, that's the water trucks you see going up and down the street, they have to water, not you guys, so, you know, but we'll sell you water, I don't care, um-
Uh, we just don't want to have to destroy more sprinklers, so-
But, uh, but that is, um, that's what's going on with that, um, so I think that's, is there any, any questions about that stuff, um, has everybody seen, if you've been to the sewer plant, we're now wrapping to the left, so we're wrapping around that far side there, um, which is exciting, that we're going around the other side now, so, I think we're gonna be able to get it fully, fully enclosed.
There's a little bit of dirt over there.
There's, uh, still some dirt to come, we still have to do Melody, and most of Cary, and, so there's a lot of dirt still to come, uh, okay, I think that's, any, Clive, you got any questions on the roads, I know you've been coming to meetings, good?
I'm good.
Okay, alright, um, okay, alright, so that's it on the, uh, on concrete roads, alright, next up is a, um, discussion of the traffic warrant study, so I know, uh, that, uh, Eric Hancock is asked to speak about this, so let me just, real quick, uh, before I turn it over to Eric, so what the traffic study is, everybody understands what a traffic warrant is, the, um, in order to put up a stoplight, the Texas Local Government Code, actually it's the Transportation Code, says, as a city, we are allowed to put up stop signs, and we are authorized to put up stoplights, we can do that, provided that we follow the manual on uniform traffic control devices, there's a manual which lays out, stop signs are red, you can't have a purple yield sign, shapes, sizes, thoughts, everything is laid out in the manual, and in the manual, the traffic warrants, there's like nine criteria that you need to meet to legally put in a stoplight, so, what the manual says is, before city council can even vote to put in a stoplight, and, and make an ordinance there, you know, you can't run the red light, you have to get a licensed traffic engineer to perform a traffic study, to verify with his stamp, that you meet one of the nine criteria, so, you, this is step one A, you don't even bother to cross the outline, if you don't clear this hurdle, it's over, game, set, match, okay, so, this traffic study that they, that we did, is, now you have it back, you see the recommendation, um, which is, as we would expect, the document itself is gonna change, there's some typos in the document, but I need a chance to go back and forth to Todd, so we're gonna clean it up a little bit, there's some typos in there, you know, and, there's a couple of the, uh, of the diagrams aren't exactly correct, but, um, anyway, that's kind of what this is, so, uh, what we'll do is, uh, we'll, we'll let, we'll let Eric speak, and then we'll go back, and then we'll address any questions that, that you guys might have, okay, so, um, so what we have is Eric Hancock is asked to speak on this agenda item, I think Eric, uh, was given the, uh, the protocol, Linda, I think sent it to him, um, regarding this, uh, this, uh, open meetings thing, so Eric, uh, you got, uh, you have three minutes to, uh, uh, speak, Linda, if you'll unmute him. Oh, is he gonna go? Okay, uh, Eric, you're, you're up.
Okay, man, uh, good evening, this is Eric Hancock, eight-two-four-nine Tremont Place, Frisco, Texas, seven-five-oh-three-four, uh, so I am speaking on the traffic warrant study, uh, I am one-third owner of twenty acres at the front of Lakewood Village, me, my brother, Lane Hancock, and Steve Dumaine, we've owned it for about fifteen years, and the entrance, uh, to Lakewood Village is our one safe entrance, our only entrance that comes in, uh, off of El Dorado, onto our property, our main issue has to do with this, um, traffic warrant recommends, uh, tearing out the current, uh, entrance to Lakewood Village, uh, this is the first time that Lakewood Village has publicly brought up tearing out, uh, the entrance, uh, to Lakewood Village, uh, and I've watched the council meeting since, uh, twenty sixteen, that Joni, uh, resident Joni Lehan has been diligently videoing, uh, I think I've seen everyone that's done there, so, uh, when I noticed on the agenda packet that, uh, that you had this warrant, and I read that they recommended tearing it out, I called Secretary Carrie Linda Asbell yesterday, I asked her if that was the plan, she said obviously, you know, she doesn't, uh, have a vote, and she didn't wanna, you know, speculate on that, but, she did say, quote, "You will have access to your property," I believe that's the, uh, pretty much the exact quote, and I took that to her as referring, uh, that I would have to, um, access my property with the most recent, uh, thoroughfare plan, and, um, so, that shows us having to come in through the new town entrance, circle back to our property via one thousand feet of town roads, uh, and county roads, um, three or four hundred feet of new driveway to get to the pad side at the front of town that we currently don't have to do with our easement, um, so, then Secretary Asbell told me, maybe you should have come to one of those meetings for the thoroughfare plan, and I told her I was well aware of the thoroughfare plan, um, and that said nothing about taking out the front entrance, uh, she thought it showed access taking out the entrance, um, on the plan, and I told her, uh, it just showed access, uh, and, uh, abandoning Lake Crest well before our entrance easement, uh, uh, at the current town entrance, uh, and we're fine with that, you know, abandoning Lake Crest, uh, and I sent that to the council last night, but now, I see a study, this study that wants to take away the entrance, and I need to strongly state to the council that we would see this as tremendously devaluing our property and an illegal taking by the town, uh, violation of our constitutional rights as property owners, further, further, this study appears to accept non-factual assertions to meet a desired outcome, a couple of the assertions, I have sent to the council already, the distances that Kimley-Horn traffic study, uh, uh, show for deceleration, uh, zone currently at Lakewood Village, they say sixty feet, Denton-Cad aerial with measuring tool shows ninety-six feet with a conservative measurement, and I sent that aerial with their measuring tool, another one, Kimley, this Kimley-Horn study shows that there is only about two hundred feet to extend a new wider turn lane where the current entrance is, and I sent you an aerial from Denton-Cad with the measuring tool showing two hundred and ninety-plus feet, they're off by a hundred feet, that's a big deal, so if the town wants a new entrance and the signal light to be moved further up, let's, let us keep our entrance, uh, don't violate our rights with that, and, uh, if you do let us keep our entrance, and you want to, uh, you know, you can use a barrier and let us put up a, maybe a, um, uh, you know, a gate, electronic gate that we open, and you can use signage saying, "Go to the signal lights, enter Lakewood Village," uh, but don't take away our constitutional rights, and I thank you for your time, that is all.
Okay, alright, thanks Eric, appreciate it, uh, okay, so, um, alright, so let me, uh, let me point out a couple things that we can ask some questions, you guys, I don't know whether you remember, you might, so back in the line or so of two thousand nineteen, we had the engineers look at three different locations for the proposed entrance, one to the east, one to the west, and the existing current entrance, and their recommendation was that we move it to the proposed location, we then had four public hearings, we adopted the thoroughfare plan after several public hearings within, in its location, what is shown here, and I was in remember of two thousand nineteen, after public hearings, we adopted the thoroughfare plan, which showed the location where the traffic warrant is, so, we've had this, this, in this same spot for almost a year and a half, we have, we're putting it there on diagrams, we adopted the thoroughfare plan, we adopted the recommendation from the engineers, so, this is not something which happened yesterday, this has been sitting here for over a year, uh, it's just taken us a year to get land plan, to get that development square enough, so we could move ahead with the, with the plan, so, um, so, question about the traffic warrant, any questions? There's obviously different, different criteria for the traffic warrant, you get, um, it's based on traffic flows and that kind of stuff.
But after reading it, I mean, I, I kinda, there's some concern, I mean, it's the first draft, I mean, there's some wording in there that I think is misleading, that will, you know, I'll get red light to get to you, so we can get back to the engineer, but, but get it, I mean, yeah.
I mean, the, the, okay, the, the conclusion of the engineers that we warrant, so we not only warrant a traffic signal, we also warrant it's an individual right turn lane turning into the city, off of El Dorado, so, they've made the determination that we don't wanna, you know, accordion up El Dorado by people turning right into the village, um, there is something, uh, like in one of the charts, it shows, you know, that Lake Crest is to be abandoned, well, that's true, Lake Crest is gonna be abandoned, but there's gonna be an alternate road to Lake Crest, okay, so, everybody's property's gonna have exactly the same act, will have access, but it will be in a different road, it's not gonna be Lake Crest, it's gonna be a different road, so for instance, the area to the east, west, area to the west is gonna have a different road that land plan's gonna put in, Lake Crest is gone, all of Lake Crest is gonna go away, it's gonna be a new road that's gonna go in place of Lake Crest.
There's a portion of Lake Crest that is undeveloped, right, so I mean, there's, there's a lot of compromises here, right, so, the folks in, the folks that live in the shores are gonna have a speedier access, and some of the folks, like Daryl and myself, that are on Lake Crest, we have a little bit longer commute, because we'll have to meander through town a little bit more, so I mean, it's, you know, at the benefit of getting, uh, a light, and we have, we have an opportunity here to partner with the developer to achieve that, so it's, um, and, you know, the warrant, I, I like what Kimley-Horn did, they looked at alternatives of moving the entrance further to the west to get off the curve, 'cause that is where the danger is, um, unfortunately, that land to the west is not really up for development, so we're kinda, we'd miss an opportunity here to go after a light, so.
Yeah, I think-
But, yeah, I, I think of our options, I think this is a really unique opportunity here to, to get a, to get a light, and, you know, but more, more importantly, I, we just need to get with Kimley-Horn, make sure we get the language cleaned up, there's, like I said, there's, we need dialogue in there, and-
So what you do with the traffic warrant, once you get, like what we have here, is you basically take it and you stick it in the file, you don't send it to anybody, you don't, we don't need anyone's permission to put in a traffic signal, we can put in anyone we want, all we need is that, let's just say, let's say that we, uh, similarly, let's say we drop the speed limit to fifteen miles an hour in Lakewood Village, we're just passing ordinance, we're gonna make it fifteen miles an hour, sounds good, except you can't do that, we can't do that, we can only drop it to twenty-five, if we go anything else, there has to be a traffic study, if we did it at fifteen, and somebody got a ticket, the first thing they could say is, "Where's your traffic study?", well, without that traffic study, that means the ordinance is void, means we did not have the authority to do that, the, our authority's only after a traffic study, so, that's kinda how these things play, is that if we put in a stoplight, I mean, you know, you just take that warrant, that way if there's ever a question, hey, you know, I had an accident there, and the accident was caused by your traffic signal, then we just pull out the warrant and show, no, we followed all the steps, Kimley-Horn is the one that signed the paper, okay, so, it's a necessary step that we have to go through, and it's, it's, I'm glad that we got through this stuff, and that's important.
Yeah, we need to be ready to put that light in, which is very important, that it ended up there.
And land plan knows now, they know about the light, or they know about the, the, the warrant, okay, next up is consideration of a municipal services agreement with LEISD, um, Linda, you want, you wanna talk about this?
Um, I, I sent that over to LEISD, they have reviewed it, um, their representative, the thing, who, the board has reviewed it, and their attorney has reviewed it, I have a track, um, issues, they have some language changes, just on the description of the property, that they were good, and this is the very standard stuff that's required in all annexations, it's, it's pretty boilerplate, all of the annexations are that way, it's just describing the services that we're gonna provide to that property, once we're in, yeah.
Motion, guys, in the old days, most annexations, till a couple years ago, were, were, um, involuntary, you wake up in the morning, hi there, you're now in our city, who annexed you to get the taxes, so, in order for it to be fair, they passed laws that said, okay, if you annex somebody, you have to give them a plan as to how you're gonna get them water, sewer, and everything else, fair is fair, and if you don't do it within a certain timeframe, like twenty-four months or something, then you gotta de-annex them, 'cause they're paying taxes, and you're giving them nothing, so, you have to have a service plan, so whenever you do an annexation, you have to put it in paper, this is how we're gonna provide you services, and this is what we're gonna give you, so it's crystal clear what you're doing, now with us, the school district is gonna vote on the annexation, as part of the big developer agreement, annexation, on Monday, well, if they vote on Monday to do that, then we have to have them approve a service agreement, well, they don't need again for- Well, they don't need again for, you know what I'm saying? So we're just doing it all in one, here, here's the service agreement, approve this, that, prove it all together in one, so we get the clock ticking. There's like a fifty-one day, forty-five day, you know, publish this, wait three days, dance around in a circle, hold your nose, there's things you gotta do for forty-five days before you can annex. So we gotta get these things done, so we gotta get the clock going, and one way you get the clock going is you get the agreement, this stuff signed. So that's what this is, this is a boilerplate, we have to do it, otherwise, we gotta wait for our meeting, and then their meeting, and then, you know what I mean, we're, we're late, um, so that's all this is, okay? It's a, it's a necessary step, okay? So, Larry, you gonna say something? Okay, all right, um, this is a consideration item, so, do they have any questions about it? Um, it just says we're gonna provide them with, same stuff we had, water, sewer, garbage, usual stuff. So, this is, so, it's a consideration, I, I need a...
Make a motion to approve the municipal services agreement with LEISD.
Okay, it's a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, agreement. Eric Scott the second, thank you sir, always in favor, thank you, all right, very good. Yeah, that's just a necessary thing to keep it, uh, keep it moving forward, my consideration of contract for water wastewater operations. So, as you guys know, Patterson, its contract expires the end of the month, so they're out, uh, we're gonna be using, uh, someone else instead, did a lot of research, talked with some people, and...
And they worked it on, to the end of their contract?
No, they worked to the end of the contract, which is November, that's the ninety-day notice.
And they've been doing what it is?
They've been showing up. The sewer plant is in horrible shape, but they're, they've been showing up, but not doing anything. Um, the, uh, not doing much, let's put it that way. Um, so what we're gonna do is, so what we're gonna do is this, this is the best solution, I have got an, an agreement with, um, a licensed operator, so Brett Pagan, who's a former Patterson person, he is going to, um, come online for us, but what we're gonna do is, uh, we're gonna hire him as an employee. What that means is Lakewood Village will be the operator, just like any other city, we're not gonna outsource it, it's inside the city, so we're doing it, he's working as a part-time employee to do it. Advantage of that for us is, that means he doesn't have to have an, an operating company, and he doesn't have to pay for insurance, because he's covered under our TML insurance. So right now, we're gonna pay Patterson, somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-five thousand, to do this, and I have got Brett, so Brett's agreed that, uh...